Good morning, everyone. I see we have our full council present. I'd like to welcome everyone to this Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, May the 21st. The first item, as I indicated earlier, all of our council is present. We've got a great agenda this morning. The first item on our agenda, item 1A, is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide direction on a future transportation capital improvement bond program, including transportation projects eligible for Proposition 400 funding. Mr. Brady, thank you for getting back to us so quickly on this.
Yeah.
What can you tell us?
Thank you, Mayor. It's RJ and Eric who did all the work. So they're here just to go back over a presentation we presented to council maybe three months ago?
About three months ago.
Three months ago, when we were discussing this possibility of the transportation bond. So we just want to, we're not going to go to all of the effort and the detail that, if you remember, we did a lot of survey and outreach with the community. And as a result, we had established a list of priorities. So I'm going to have them review that with you, just to kind of show you what's possible or at least the options that we can look at going forward and then what would happen if we didn't go out for transportation bonds. So RJ, Eric?
Mayor, members of the council, good morning. Again, RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department and with me is Eric Gudarian, our Deputy Director for Transportation, for Traffic Engineering, excuse me. So following on the conversation that the council had on Monday, we'll give you an overview of kind of where we left the conversation three months ago. So the first slide shows that if we were to go to the voters in the fall of this year, what the impact would be on the typical homeowner along with the number of regional funding, projects that would be eligible for regional funding, which is the arterial lifecycle program or ALCP. As we've talked about before, under Proposition 400 are three major categories of funding. There's the freeway lifecycle program, the transit lifecycle program, of course, we're talking about the arterial lifecycle program. So in increments of $100, $150 and $200 million, you can see the number of projects that could be funded within each of those amounts, as well as the number of projects that would be eligible for some level of regional reimbursement. And in addition to that, the cost to a typical homeowner on an annual basis. So if there are no questions on that slide, we can move forward.
Okay. And council, any questions for this slide? All right. Thank you, RJ. Please proceed.
So what we did, if you recall from a few months back, within each of those funding options, we grouped the projects by priority. The footnote next to each project shows whether or not the projects are eligible for regional reimbursement. So we have a mix of corridor projects such as Signal Butte and Broadway. We also have some intersection projects, Southern Avenue, Sossaman and Baseline, Stapley Drive and University Drive, as well as some shared use paths. And that would fall within the $100 million level of funding. If we were to go to $150 million, these five projects are added on to the projects from the previous slide. Again, several shared use paths along with some arterial projects, as well as funding to do some reconstruction of arterial roadways that are reaching the end of their useful life. And then the last slide is seven more projects. Again, if we went to $200 million and what the anticipated costs of those projects are. If council chose to defer the bond election from the fall of this year to 2022, Eric and his staff put together what we're calling an interim plan. And what this would allow us to do is bridge the time period between now and a 2022 election and what projects we would be able to fund with existing resources. Scott Butler from Office of Management and Budget is available by phone and Candace is here as well if you have specific funding questions. But the highest priority project we've identified is Signal Butte Road from Williamsville to Germaine. This is broken into two pieces. If you recall, the section from Pecos to Germaine, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Queen Creek where they would advance the funding for this section of roadway. And the city of Mesa has just over 10 years to reimburse Queen Creek from today if we were to move forward with this project. So the thought here is that there are sufficient funds between what's left from the 2013 transportation bond, as well as what we call the transportation fund. And that's where the reimbursement dollars that come back from other projects go into a fund that we can use to fund other projects moving forward. You recall the previous conversation we had with our conversion of our existing streetlight system to LED. Broadway Road is currently in design. So this is from the Swir to Spur. We call it Mesa to Stapley just because people can better visualize the arterial streets. The Southern Avenue and Country Club intersection is in very poor condition and needs to be rebuilt, along with actually a fair amount of utility work that would go with that. What I want to focus or bring to your attention though is number six. And number six is an estimated cost of $6 million. And this would allow us to continue or begin design on certain roadway projects so that when additional transportation capital becomes available, that we're in a position to move forward with construction relatively quickly. Part of this goes to the mayor's question that was brought up on Monday about making sure that we're still able to leverage those Proposition 400 ALCP dollars and that we don't lose anything. In conversations with Scott, not Budget Scott Butler, but Scott J. Butler, you know, there will be additional conversations at the region, at MAG, you know, to ensure that as we near the end of the existing program, that those funds don't just go away. The sales tax collection ends at the end of 2025 under the current Proposition 400, but it doesn't mean that the dollars that go away, you know, would simply vanish. But the projects that we've identified for design are Ellsworth Road from the Southern City limit at Germaine, North State Route 24, the intersection of Sossaman and Baseline, which is in need of additional turning movement capacity, and then Velvish to Drive from Pueblo to the US 60. I know that was pretty quick, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So Mayor, just real quickly, just to make note, so we have the funds available to do this interim now because of dollars that have been reimbursed for other projects or dollars that are sitting in our transportation count. So that's what, this is, I'll just make it clear, if council chooses to defer the election, again, I think we would recommend not deferring to next year, but to the 2022 year because then it would be part of another general election, right, Dan? So that would save us significant dollars from an election cost. So that's why I think last time we talked, we talked about just doing it one year. But after really considering the opportunity, if we could go two years, then obviously that would save a significant amount of dollars on the election. So I just want to share that with you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Luna and then Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Brady, you talked about maybe deferring it an additional two years from now. Well, then, are you anticipating or does Scott Butler anticipate that MAG would then go out with Proposition 400 for the continuance of that at the same time? So both of these would be done concurrently? Is that something that we're anticipating?
So as I understand it today, that is the current conversation that's taking place at MAG, is to extend the current sales tax that's expiring, as was mentioned, in 2025. But having the election to continue that forward into the future would be theoretically, then yes, they would be on the same ballot in November of 2022.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah. I think each of us could probably whittle our list down a little bit to what we consider the priorities from what we're hearing from our constituents. My concern with waiting until 2022 is that the election wouldn't be held until August or November, November, right? So it'd be 2023 at the latest before you could start any design work, which would put you into the end of 2023 or beginning of 2024 before you could procure, which means you probably wouldn't even start construction until 2025. And the projects, depending on what they were, wouldn't be completed until 2026, 2027. And honestly, I can't see our citizens waiting on Southern and Country Club or waiting on Signal Butte, you know, to be able to get traffic in and out of the neighborhoods. Sossaman and Baseline is accident prone. There's pretty bad accidents there all the time. So we need to do some work there. I mean, it's just, our needs are so great. I can't fathom putting this off for another five to six years on getting some of these roads and transportation issues taken care of across our city. You know, so I would prefer, honestly, I'd prefer to go to, you know, go out for a bond, let the citizens decide if they want to impose a secondary property tax on themselves. I think it's our obligation to allow the citizens to make that decision and put it forward and see what happens. But again, like I said, I can go through this list and I can pick the priorities that I hear my constituents, my constituents talk about quite a bit, and I'm sure the other council members can as well. And we'd be able to maybe get this list down to, you know, the needs versus wants.
So Mayor, Councilman Thompson, just to be clear, what we're proposing on slide six, all those projects would move forward. The projects that are listed with, there's projects, well, one through four are all, well, one, two and one, two and four are currently under design today. We've already committed design dollars. And so those dollars are those, that work is already taking place. And what we're proposing is during these interim phase, is that we would actually complete, the construction would take place for all these projects that you're seeing on this interim transportation plan. And not to lose momentum, so that when we do have dollars available, as you said, at the beginning of 2023, what we're, Eric has come up with the plan on, that's identified as, I guess, line six, where he would, during this time, during the next two years, he would continue with the design of all those projects listed under footnote three.
Yes.
So that the good news there is that we would be spending the time now, or at least during the next couple of years, getting the design completed so that if a project, if bonds are approved in 2022, he's ready to go to bid for construction immediately after that. So that's why we presented this as kind of a way to really kind of keep the momentum going and not lose much momentum as far as completing projects in that list, as well as doing design so that when a bond package is approved, we would have the funding to move forward. So I just want to make that clear, that this is a plan to complete projects and keep design work going so we have projects to construct if we wait and delay the bond package.
Right. But I'm looking at some of the other projects that are listed, like the Ray Road connection. I mean, there's development and developers that are already looking at that area. So that's going to become a priority because at some point, even if we have the developers develop and build Ray Road, there's going to be a reimbursement cost that's going to hit the city on that. And so if we don't have the funding available, you know, how do we offset that cost? So there's, like I said, I can go through, again, Sossaman and Baseline, essential, you know, for District Six. I could go through and list probably a lot of the projects. There's a lot of these that I could take off as being essential projects for District Six. I just, I just think waiting another four to five, six years is way too long to have some of these transportation issues taken care of.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Mayor. What was our last bonding package? What was, what to the voters? What did we approve? And when was that?
For streets or for other types of bonds?
Yeah, for this transportation project, streets.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, perhaps Scott Butler can answer that question if he's on the phone?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman. The last streets bond funding was in 2013 and it was $110 million.
And what was the cost to the average homeowner at that point?
I don't know. We'll have to look that up, Councilman Freeman. I don't know that we all, I don't know that we remember what that was. But it's state, I'm sure we could find a publicity pamphlet or something that would tell us, but I, I don't have that in front of me.
That's, that's fine, Chris.
Because I think there was, what do we do, other things with that? We might have had public safety and transportation on the same election too, so.
We'll follow up on that question, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, you know, going back to slide three, and I look at some of the prioritization of the projects for the $100 million. I mean, there's, there's some on there, like to Councilmember Thompson's point, that I don't, I don't, to me, I don't see that they're a priority like, do we need our bike lanes and our eastern canal shared path right now? I mean, I'd like to see that, but is to ask Eric or RJ, is that a priority, do you think? Or you're just including that $100 million project?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we received quite a bit of feedback during the Mesa Moves Outreach Campaign for the addition of bike and ped paths or not just paths, but connection throughout the city, shared use paths being one component of that. You know, so to answer your question, we love the path and our residents, you know, do as well. You know, can we continue without them? Of course we can. You know, so I think it ultimately is a, is a question, you know, for council where your comfort level is from a funding standpoint.
Okay. Good. You know, I, as I look at this, Chris, I like the interim component if we don't lose the momentum. But then again, I'm okay with creating a bond package that could go to the voters and let them decide what they would like in their community. Obviously, most of the, a lot of the work is maybe the southeast part of Mesa, but that's where we're growing the fastest. But then we have a lot of road repairs and, like you said, intersection repairs, the streetlight conversion projects. I think that's on an ongoing basis, correct? I mean, that was a pretty high number, I believe, you gave us originally. And so you're trying to bring that down every year with the conversion. But I guess that's where I'm at. I like the interim, however, I would consider having a bond package prepared. Thank you.
Mr. Luna?
My concern is that we have to get this on the ballot by June 15th. We're talking three weeks, four weeks? Do we have enough time to actually prepare our bond package and get it ready in terms of, in terms of getting it out to the ballot? So that's my concern. I guess, Mr. Brady, I'm going to rely on your, on your judgment. We're scrambling just to deal with this COVID pandemic at this point. And so I'm concerned about now introducing this and trying to get the word out. We're going to have to get it hard. Do we really have the time to do this at this point?
Mayor, Councilwoman, thank you. I, we will do it. If this is a priority of council, we will make it happen. I think this is the challenge we have is where we ended up with council was just kind of at this, where we're at right now today, just showing you a list of projects. And if there needs to be a conversation about projects that are in the $100 million or not in the $100 million and in and out, then that probably could take, that could probably be, that could challenge us, right? To get the list of all the projects that council would like to see or which ones you'd like to see. I think we need to establish, one, if we're going to move forward, are we at the $100 million mark? Are we at the $150? Where, where do you want to land? And then Eric could go through, Eric has a matrix that he did based on the feedback he got from the community, based on engineering studies about how these got prioritized because they all kind of fall in different categories, groups that were then, you know, so they didn't necessarily have arterials competing against bike, bike paths, but they prioritize in those different areas. So we could go back, we could come back and show you that and then make sure we have the priority of projects that the council is interested in. But really, I think the time that is, we're running out of time for is to establish this list and then getting it on the agenda for the 15th would be, I mean, that's what we would have to do. But we could spend the next, all the Thursdays just trying to go through the list and get everyone comfortable. So that's, we wanted to give you options today is really what we have to do.
Well, it seems to me that we could probably delay into the 2022 election. I think that it would be a safer route to go that way. So that would be my, my stance on this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Chris, I could have you a list by the end of the day. I could go through this and prioritize for District Six and have it to you by the end of the day if that's what it takes.
Well, we don't do it that way. I mean, that would be a good start, but I need six others to weigh in on this because one of the things we're trying to do also is make sure we share this across the entire city as much as possible where the priorities are. And so.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is it's not that difficult. And so to Councilmember Luna's point, if we're running out of time, I mean, like I said, I can have you a list by the end of the day, looking at this list and prioritize. And I'm sure that my colleagues could as well get that to you probably within the next few days. And just go out and drive your district and look at the streets that are on here and figure out, you know, which ones are priorities or listen to your constituents and figure out which ones are priorities. But like I said, I could, I think if we all put the effort and energy into it, we could, we could prioritize this list. And you would be ready to go, go next week with a list of priority transportation projects in each of our districts.
Okay. Jen, Councilmember Duff. Jen, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. I'm using a different computer. Anyway, I'm kind of in between on this. I can see the pros and cons of it, but I just wanted to clarify for my own knowledge, the interim transportation plan, whatever slide that is, that is a bond list? I mean, we still need to go to bond, right?
Councilmember Duff.
Is what we can do within?
We, yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Duff, that's why we chose just a few of these projects. With the balances we have in our transportation fund, we think we can squeeze these projects out because we've already funded the design work for three, three or four of these.
Signal Buttes and Broadway.
Yeah. So we've already, and the fact that Queen Creek is paying for the cost of the second one, we believe we have the, we have the funding to be able to deliver these projects without going for additional authorization. We'll use street bonds, but they're remaining street bonds. We just have, we have a little, have a small amount that we'll be able to use for that. And then we have money that's been reimbursed to us from other projects by the region that we'll be able to use also.
Right. Thank you. So if we decided to do $100 million bond and put it on this year's election, so what tax year would the residents be affected?
Oh goodness. Okay. So the election would take place in 2022. We would probably be selling bonds in the middle of 2023. That's usually when we would sell bonds. So it would be the following year is most likely, I think, we would hit it.
Right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. It would be whatever the election is, so if it's November of '20, then it would be the '21, '22 fiscal year is when you would adopt a new property tax, secondary property tax levy. So the following, the following fiscal year. So if you wait till '22, then it wouldn't be till the '23, '24 fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay. Before it's impacted on the resident.
Yeah. It'd be three, three years after.
Okay. And on the projects, do we use, I know it might be difficult to say overall, but do we use city employees for any of these projects or are they all contracted?
All right. Councilmember Duff, can I get a clarification on the question? Through the design process or for construction of the project?
Well, I guess, I guess both. I'm just wondering for employment issues, how that impacts the city or does it?
Sure. Councilmember Duff, Mayor, the, all of our major CIP projects, we use consultants for design and then a private contractor to build. Our engineering department has staff that is out there managing the project and inspecting the project, but for the major design components and construction, that's all ironed out.
But, but Councilor, we, what we do, our role is both in engineering and in Eric's group, is the oversight, management and inspection of the project. So we kind of create a separation where we contract out the work, but then our role becomes managing it, inspecting it, making sure the project is delivered.
Okay. And do we wait, I believe we do, on contracts that we award to contractors, consultants? Do we wait local businesses?
We, we have in our methodology some points, I don't know if we, yeah, to allow, we have some points for local.
For Mesa businesses.
For Mesa businesses, yeah. We do that for most procurements. Local Mesa businesses get additional points, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm still kind of torn in between. I can see how it would benefit our city, but then I don't know what the voter's temperament is in these economic times and wanting to be responsible for those decisions. So I'll leave it at that. I don't have more.
Sure. I have a couple of questions. I appreciate this presentation. It answers the question that was at the top of my mind, which is if we do, if we are tentative in moving forward, what would the impact be on just the loss, the opportunity loss of not being able to leverage the Prop 400 monies? And so as I understand the presentation, if we went with a $100 million bond package that would allow us to get, to participate in eight projects with Prop 400 funding, which is a good bang for our buck if we even, if we double that, it just goes from eight to 11. So I like the, the way that it's weighted towards, you know, again, leveraging of the Prop 400 monies. Another thought I had is, I mean, I think we, everybody in this room has been through this before. I mean, we know this is a cycle. We know that during downturns, we all are afraid to move forward sometimes when it feels tone deaf to be talking about increasing bond indebtedness when unemployment and, you know, economic indicators are horrible. But again, if we go forward with this and get voter approval, as far as when this would impact our citizens, that's really up to us to decide because if the economy continues to tank in such a way that we think it is inappropriate to add any burden to our taxpayers, we can, we can wait. You know, just because the bonds are authorized doesn't mean that we need to immediately proceed. And in the past, I know we've, we've had some great stories of when we've built during downturns, we were able to get better prices and, and really have a bigger bang for our buck. So RJ and Chris, do you think there might be, I guess, I'm not asking you to pull out your crystal ball, but if with this downturn in the economy, might we see another opportunity for us to, to get some lower prices and maybe be in a position to, to take advantage of that?
Yeah. Mayor, that's a great question. I think I keep asking engineering, waiting to see that happening. We haven't seen it yet, but I don't know that we've gone out for a lot of big project bids recently. My sense is even while we've been going through this pandemic, there's still been quite a bit of activity out there. So I don't know on the, if you're a contractor out there, at least my perception, there's still a lot of, still a lot of that work going on, but we have, to Mayor, to be honest, we just haven't had a chance to bid out a project to come back and tell you, oh yeah, this is going to be a great time. Now, to your point though, Mayor, that's why we kept the, we wanted to keep the momentum on projects that are already under design in the interim because we will be able to take advantage of those projects. If we approve the bond package, that's great, but remember, most of these projects on that list would still have to go through a design phase. So they're probably, and we're not going to do all these projects in the same year. This is a four to five year program. So the list of projects there, you need, we need to think in terms of that's going to be spread out over four to five years. So some of those projects, we won't even start design work on for another three years or more. And so that's just something to think about. It's, it's probably not a great comparison between the two lists. The first list is just showing you a four to five year. Uh, the fir, the first list is just showing you a four to five year program. And so some of these projects are much further out in the future. The interim program was just a bridge to keep momentum going, keep projects being built that we've already committed the design work for and continue doing design work so that if we do a future bond election, we will have projects that are shovel ready to go. Um, and it really, what it affects is just the projects that are even further out into the future, um, that we would have to, um, they may be delayed just a little bit than other, they would otherwise be under this proposal to go forward this year.
Well, I, I have to admit, I, I was somewhat skeptical of the, with the, the idea of putting, uh, any, uh, additional bonds, you know, on the, the ballot for the foreseeable future, but, uh, the more I've thought about it, the more I, I appreciate this presentation. I think I've kinda come around to the idea that, that, uh, some of the few things that we know that are absolutely real is that the growth that we're dealing with is, is real. The folks that are on our, our streets, uh, and the traffic congestion is real, the deterioration of some of these intersections is real. Uh, and I, I think this is a cycle. Uh, we'll get through it and a, a year or two from now, uh, we'll be grateful if we aren't overly tentative at this point. So I, uh, I, I don't, I don't, I would, I don't wanna see us, uh, act like nothing's wrong because we are in the midst of an economic crisis for sure, but my preference would be to proceed with the $100 million bond package. Um, and again, we're gonna need to explain to our constituents why, uh, but, but a lot of them are, I, you know, they, they'll explain to us why, you know, they're, they're the ones that are stuck in traffic right now. Uh, and I think again, we, we can say that if for some reason this economic downturn gets worse, you know, we won't be tone deaf to that and we won't be, uh, spending money when we know people don't have it to share with us. So my, my thought is to proceed with the $100 million package.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
Um, on that ALCP reimbursement for the different bond packages, the 100, 150 and 200, how much money are we losing out on the ALCP reimbursements on each one of those
It's not, and let's be careful, we don't lose the money, it's just that we don't realize the reimbursement until we complete the project. So it's just a delay.
Correct. I think, uh, Councilmember Whitaker, Mayor, I'll, we can get a number back to you. It was in our previous presentation. Off the top of my head, I, I think it's, uh, it's north of $100 million that we have in the ALCP, um, between now and the end of the program.
Okay. I, uh, I don't, uh, exactly recall how the ALCP, uh, reimbursement works. Maybe could you just give me like a, a quick refresher? I know we discussed it in the last meeting, but my understanding is, uh, we spend a certain amount of money and then a certain percentage of that is reimbursed from the state government or the federal government?
Sure. Councilmember Whitaker, Mayor, um, so the reimbursements come back through the region, through, uh, the Maricopa Association of Governments, through MAG. Um, and we, as the city, have to front the money, um, through design and, and through construction. We get reimbursed, uh, on a quarterly basis. We, we submit, um, reimbursement requests and we can get reimbursed up to 70% of our costs. So it's a 70, 30 split.
Okay, that, that was my question. Um, and the, the, the next question I have is the funding source on this. So I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, we're, we're clear on the, the funding source. So if we go out for bond authorizations, um, this year and the voters, uh, vote to approve it, we then issue, uh, secondary property tax, uh, bonds in the future years, right? Like this isn't, uh, what's the impact to our general fund budget? Or, or is there none because all the funds are basically being passed through, um, from the secondary property tax?
That's correct. It's a, it's because a second, the construction of this comes through the secondary property tax. So there's not a expense to the general fund, um, until obviously we have to maintain the streets.
Okay. Um, and the next question I have is, uh, can we put multiple bond packages on the same ballot?
Meaning like different amounts? Is that what you're asking for, Councilmember, or I'm not sure.
Right. So, so what I, what, like, it seems like in, you know, what, what we're trying to decide and, you know, you may agree or disagree with this philosophy, but I guess my question is if we're trying to decide between a hundred, 150 or 200, could we just put those on the ballot and say, you know, if the voters vote for a $200 million bond package, then that supersedes the 150 or the 150 supersedes the 100 and just leave it up to the voters to say, you know, hey, what condition do you feel like your streets are in? Would you like to see, um, a hundred million dollars reinvested in the streets? Here's all the stuff that we can get accomplished with a hundred million dollars or would you like to see $200 million? You know, here's a longer list of things that, that'll get accomplished if, if we don't, uh, $200 in the transportation.
I, we've never done that. Um, there may be some confusion because each increment would include projects, you know, the 100 million becomes the base, 150 million includes 100 plus additional projects. I don't know, we've never done that. I, I think the messaging is difficult. But we could look into that. I, I don't think we've ever, I, not since I've been here, we've ever done anything like that.
Okay. Well, I guess where, where I leave off on this then is I, I don't, um, you know, I, I, I'm kinda confused by the concept of how we look at this, of sending this out to the voters as either a win or a loss, right? Like I, if the voters don't approve the bonds, I don't look at it like, what, what did we lose? So the voters said that they don't think the streets need to be improved, so they don't get improved, right? So I, I guess I'm a little baffled by this concept of winner loss. Um, so I, I'm all for, uh, creating some type of language that gives, gives the ability for, um, you know, the voters to decide what, what they wanna do, you know? They can, from not approving any of the bonds to $0 to 200. I mean, it's, they vote on it, they approve it and either raises their primary, uh, secondary property tax or it doesn't. So, um, yeah, again, I, I, I'm, I'm confused by the winner loss type of scenario, but that, that's where I sit on the issue.
Okay, Council, other questions or comments on this? Uh, I know this, this, this is agendized to provide direction. Uh, I'm, just for the, the sake of trying to, to develop some consensus, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we ask staff to proceed with a $100 million transportation, preparing, uh, a package for a $100 million bond. Um, and again.
I second that, Mayor.
Okay. I'm not surprised. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. But I think that, that, that might be a good way for us to, to just, uh, decide where, you know, decide where we're at on this. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Luna, do you have a comment?
Uh, you know, Mayor, I'm, what concerns me is how quickly we have to pivot, uh, because of the pandemic and the effect that, the message that it sends out to our community that, uh, the city of Mesa is gonna go for this bond package, uh, during these difficult economic times. I, it's happened before because during, uh, we were able to construct the, uh, Sloan Park and during very difficult times and voters decided to approve that. So I'm willing to go ahead and move forward looking to see what that looks like in terms of the $100 million and, uh, I'm not completely, uh, against it, if you will. I'm, I'm certainly willing and open to look at what that might look like.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think this is all tentative. I mean, the, the economy could continue to get worse, the economy could start to bank back up or, obviously, we don't know, but I, that, that's the spirit in which I'm making this motion is that let's, uh, let's proceed so that we have options.
And Mayor, can I just say, you said something I think is really important, that, um, even if we get authorization for the 100 million and then something in the economy happens where we can not sell bonds, right? We can defer projects out into the future. So it's not automatic that the, um, impact on the secondary property tax takes place. We, we can, we have every year to make a, a decision. I think that was a good point you made and certainly I think that makes a lot of sense.
I got a question on that, Chris. Do those bond authorizations expire?
They do not.
Nope.
They do not.
Not yet, cause we've been spinning authorizations from.
We still, we still have solid waste authorization from.
We have 1990 authorizations out there.
I believe so, yes.
Wow.
But they're like solid waste, they're specific. We've pretty much wiped out anything else, whether it's public safety or streets, those are more, more, um, recent.
Okay, thank you. I know we've got some council members that wanna weigh in. Let's go with Mr. Freeman and then Mr. Heredia.
Welcome. To my point, I, I brought up the fact that our last, uh, transportation or street project bond package was 2013, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, if we have to push it out, we can, but I, I like the idea of getting it out to the voters and let them decide, but, uh, ultimately the decision is ours to move this forward. So I, I support the 100 million and, uh, see where it goes from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Frankie.
Yeah, just, uh, on process, Chris, is it, does it come to council as far as the authorization each year? And we will review what, what authorizations for, uh, what projects, uh, will be done for the next, you know, one or two years? Is that the process?
Yes, Mayor, Council.
I remember.
A great question. So the way, the terminology we use when we go to the voters is they're giving us authorization to sell bonds. And so we ask for an authorization that could last us four to five years. Then each year, we come to council with a specific program, just authorization doesn't give us the funding. It just allows us then to go to the market to sell the bonds. And so yes, then each year, we come to the council to sell a certain amount of bonds out of that total authorization that will be available for us for the coming year. And then in addition, after we sell the bonds, then the council also has to approve each project, each contract to build the project. So the council has multiple opportunities to, um, affect, uh, the, the delivery of the project.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I also, I, I, I think this year, you know, as it's, it's not gonna be easy, but, uh, you know, as the growth continues, I think we project in, in the timeline over the next 10 years, we're gonna have tens of thousands of people coming in and living in Mesa. Uh, most of them, you know, throughout, throughout Southeast Valley. Uh, so it's, I, I think we gotta look ahead as well and, and see, you know, what folks wanna, 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 wanna do on our, on our roads. Um, so I would agree to see the 100 million, uh, package and see what we can do this year.
Mayor, just real quickly, let me just share, uh, the question was, came up about the, uh, previous, um, transportation package in 2013. In 2013, the street and highway bonds were question number two. The amount was 79,100,000 and we estimated then, we cut, we, it was combined with some, uh, public safety bonds, but, um, for just the transportation portion, we estimated that impact to the average homeowner was $26.40. So that, just to give you a sense of where we are today, um, versus where we were in
Very much in the ballpark of 100 million now. Looks like that's, uh, the chart, this up there is $28 a year, it looks like.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I was just gonna make the comment that I was, uh, I was talking to, uh, Tom Dunn over at Arizona Builders Alliance, um, the other day, and we were having a conversation about construction and what's going on in the valley. And from his, his standpoint, he's not seeing, you know, what the economists are, are saying. Um, you know, he, he sees just like what I'm seeing and what economic development's seeing is that there is a slight pump of the brakes, but overall, uh, construction hasn't stopped. Um, builders are still building, um, homes are still being sold. Um, you know, the, it's almost, it's, it's almost a weird economy, I guess, because as much as, as we're supposedly, uh, in a recession, it doesn't seem like it's a recession. People may not be going out to restaurants and different things, but they're still ordering takeout, people are still buying online. It's just a brick and mortar, uh, is what's suffering, uh, on the business side. So it's kind of a weird economy, but, um, for all intents and purposes, construction is still moving along. And, and to remind everyone too, the construction industry was considered an essential, um, essential businesses. And so those, you know, those folks have never really stopped working.
Thank you. Other comments on this before we vote?
Yeah, I got one last question, John.
Okay.
Hey RJ, what, what do you, I mean, you're obviously recommending three different, I guess, four different packages to us. What, what's your opinion or what are you looking for, see as the expert, uh, the needs across the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, all the projects have value, you know, uh, ultimately it's, you know, a, a council decision on what comfort level you have, you know, going, you know, to the voters. You know, um, yeah, as the mayor noted, at $100 million, you're looking at a $28, uh, impact on the median homeowner, you know, in Mesa. Um, and that gets us eight, you know, regional, regionally reimbursed, you know, projects. You know, the impact to the homeowner starts to go up, um, a fair amount. Um, and, and, and it, it's not a one for one match in terms of the, you know, the projects that we add. Um, if, if council's comfortable with $100 million, that puts us in a good place, um, you know, to get a sizable amount of, of regional reimbursement and keep some needed projects going. You know, it, it, it's one of those questions where I'd say we'd take as much money as you're willing, you know, to give us because this is what we do. Um, so I think every project, you know, we, we, it, the, the list i- is not, um, wasteful, uh, you know, I don't think, but we also understand that, you know, we live in a world where we're not gonna get, you know, every dollar that we think we could spend. So at $100 million, I'm comfortable, you know, that, you know, that provides almost $50 million in, in regional reimbursement. And as that money comes back in, that allows us to take on more projects. Um, and, uh, our staff between Eric's staff and working with engineering and OMB, we're very aggressive in going after that regional reimbursement. Uh, it's possible on an annual basis that if other cities or agencies are unable, um, to move their projects forward, we can get reimbursement early. It's called the closeout project, process. So we, uh, we aggressively, uh, seek funds, you know, where we can. And so that in itself could open up opportunities, uh, for additional funding. So at this point, I'm comfortable if council's comfortable with moving forward with a $100 million package.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, Council, we have a motion and a second. Uh, we need to do a roll call vote. I vote aye. Uh, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker.
Aye.
Councilmember Heredia.
Aye.
Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. Uh, thank you, Mr. Brady. Thank you, RJ. Thank you for, uh, bringing this to us. Uh, we look forward to, um, to voting to put this on the ballot in, uh, before the middle of June, it looks like.
Yeah, so I think, Mayor, we'll be bringing this June 15th, is what it sounds like. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 1B. That's to hear a presentation discuss and provide direction on a proposed budget and related programs supported by the federal funds received under the CARES Act. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as we, uh, indicated last week, we wanted at least, we've, feel like we've kind of gotten mo, through most of the guidance we're gonna receive, federal, federal government more continues to come to us and clarification, but we wanted to share with you kind of the balance of the, um, uh, budget for the Mesa CARES funds. Uh, some of it you've already, we've already talked about, but I wanted just to put it all in context. Um, you know, this, um, oh, I don't have anybody running the slideshow for me.
I know that.
Oh, go, thanks, RJ. I forget, I'm sitting over here, I'm not used to going. So the first slide, um, we talk about the, um, the, the guidance that we receive from the federal government on what it can be used for and those three bullet points. Um, so you can read those. It's, um, necessary expenditures related to the health emergency, um, can't be accounted in the most recent budget, although I'm gonna explain there are kind of some, um, I don't know, exceptions to that, but, um, some other, some ways that the federal government's get, given us to be able to, uh, reimburse us for some of our expenses. Um, and of course, in the, um, these are only expenditures that can be reimbursed from March 1st through December 30th. Uh, so I think we've talked about that in the past, so we'll go to the next slide. So I'm just gonna run through the different categories, um, that are either underway and then some that we're proposing, uh, again, uh, as we move forward. Uh, we started right off the shoot, uh, setting up our Mesa CARES outreach program, as you know, where we took many of our librarians and other staff members who no longer could provide services from their facility, the facilities that were closed, um, but they've have provided an invaluable resource for us. Uh, first by doing the assessment, the surveying, calling, um, many, uh, hundreds of individuals to find out what the impact of COVID was on, in their lives and that helped guide us and direct us in our recommendations of the programs that we have recommended to the council. Today, they continue to provide a very important role in providing the, uh, call center support to the small business reemergence program. Uh, they are fielding all the calls that come in, uh, regarding questions regarding the program, but just as, maybe just as importantly, they are calling back to applicants and making, helping them to make sure that their application is complete and that all the donors. helping them to make sure that their application is complete and that all the documentation is in place. So they're working very diligently to make sure that applications will be completed near as possible to our deadline on Sunday. So that, that continues to be a great service by that group. Now, that group is also having to start to transition to thinking about what we're going to do as we begin to open up libraries. So that service and that resource is kind of on a limited time right now. Most of you obviously are familiar with our, the next slide, sorry, is our food distribution program. We set aside $10 million for that program. That is really going very well. It's one of those points of pride that we certainly have about how quickly we were able to stand that program up, working with many partners in the community for food distribution, but also providing the, getting the initiative from our own folks to creating the programs where we're working with restaurants and then distributing it to staff members at hospitals, at care facilities, which is being well received. And so we have 90 restaurants that we're working with almost every day to deliver those meals. And that's continued to go very well. And as many of you have seen, you can walk through our convention center, we've essentially converted that into a food distribution center and preparation center. The next area is reimbursement for public safety and essential services that responding to COVID for $50 million. This is in alignment with what most of the large cities that are receiving these funds are doing. We've been in discussions with both Phoenix and Tucson about how they are looking at using this available or eligible expense to reimburse our public safety personnel for responding to COVID emergencies. The guidance from the federal government allows us to consider the payroll expenses for public safety as eligible expenses. But we're working with the other large cities and specifically Tucson and Phoenix. We have discussions with them to make sure that we capture the real response effort that is coming from police and fire. So in, what I mean by that, so when we look at the cost for public safety since beginning of March to the end of December, we came up with a number that was around $45, $50 million of reimbursement, for example, for patrol officers and for the fire medical response calls that they've been, they have received and will be receiving through, an estimation through December. So again, the federal government allows us to reimburse, be reimbursed for those efforts. So they made the presumption that any or all public safety expenses, payroll expenses would be eligible. So that's $50 million there. The next one we talked about last week is we're supplementing our utility assistance program by $1 million, just continuing the program that we have with Mesa Can, obviously just expanding the available resources to assist individuals who may be falling behind with their utilities and obviously offering to assist them with their natural gas and electric power needs also, which is what Mesa Can has already, has established and provides that service today. So we just met with that last week and Mr., with, we're working with Mesa Can and New Leaf to get that set up and moving forward. We expect that to happen, continue through the summer. That's our hope, is that these funds will help us to meet that, those needs through the summer. We're also, as we mentioned last time, it's nice, we're able to pair these dollars up with additional dollars that Mesa Can has received from the state to assist in these kinds of needs. So it's, we think it's a good combination of leveraging those dollars also. The next slide is the mitigation and care for the homeless population. We had a presentation from Natalie Lewis and Assistant Chief Ed Wesing on that program. We've already seen some significant contacts and work by the police department already in, in this area and already making a significant difference in areas where we were struggling with unsheltered populations. So that will continue through the summer. We did have a conversation and we are, will be returning to the council about the possibility of considering buying a permanent location, a hotel possibly to convert to a sheltering location. That's not included in the calculation right now, this 90 million. So just keep that in mind. But we're still, Mr. Hughes is going to be coming back to council with a variety of different locations and options that he's vetting through right now and have that discussion with council at a future time. Small business reemergence program, that's, as you know, that's currently underway. We're in our final week, final days of that program. I think it's been a huge success in the terms of us being able to connect with the smallest micro businesses. When we share the numbers, you might have saw them last night from the update that was provided by Mr. Butler. We are really able, or I think we're really making some good progress with those who have single proprietorship or 25 and less employees. And we're seeing a lot of good work happening by our, many of our nonprofit agencies and connecting with those individuals and getting their applications filled out. We don't think we'll become nearer to half of this amount. Frankly, the 20 million, we just weren't sure how much to provide in that account, but we suspect we'll have a significant amount of dollars. We don't expect it probably be more than six, maybe $7 million max from this current round. So also, I want to mention, one of the groups we've included in here, at the very bottom bullet, the founding partners over at the Mesa Arts Center, these are small nonprofit performing arts groups or that support or provide programming at the MAC. Obviously, they've been impacted because we've not been able to open up the doors at the theaters. And so they, that is hurting them significantly. We've asked them to provide us proposals on some assistance we could provide them during the time, at least through probably the end of the year. And so those proposals are being, I saw some, there were some drafts that came in this week and we're going back and refining those and we'll bring back those proposals to council. But we would fund that amount out of this program here. The next one's kind of a new program that I don't know we've spent much time talking to council about, but as you can imagine, our healthy buildings retrofit is, is a significant program, especially as we are having the conversations with the employees about returning to work and what that might look like and what safety precautions or safety measures we're putting in place. So we are currently going through, well, we've done the assessment, now we're trying to procure the Plexiglas barriers and all of the physical improvements we need to make, specifically where we have the high-volume interaction between the public and employees and making sure our employees are protected. And so that work is underway now and those orders are in, the contractor is on board. We're just having to wait for supplies and materials to get in and get those improvements in before we can allow the public to come back into the space. We've done a survey with all the departments about the needs that they may require as we bring employees back in. As you can imagine, a lot of hands-free improvements for doors and handles, we're trying to find opportunities to make those improvements. And then the last one, I think will be significant, I see air filtering systems, there, apparently there's a technology of, and don't, so if you're gonna ask a lot of questions, I will be able to answer a lot of it, but it's a plasma air filtering system that we have put in place in our, sorry, fire dispatch location. And it has proven to be very effective. And it is intended to also clean the air, filter the air that goes through it, and it has the ability to filter out viruses. So it is a, it's not a cheap system, but we do think with these funds that that would be something that we would install in our major facilities so that employees would know we were doing everything we could to provide the, the air that's being recirculated in the buildings would be, would go through these systems. The next one is what we call business continuity and remote access. As you can imagine, as we've moved out of city facilities and into our homes, we've had to stand up a lot of laptops and remote access devices so that individuals can continue their work from home, and which we have, and it's remarkably done, gone very well and very smoothly. But it's taken quite a bit of hardware investment that we've had to purchase and acquire during this time. So would, we reimburse ourselves through this funding, fund. But we're also recognizing there's more to be done. And so we are looking at additional expenses related to remote access for the public. And so that, that's included in this amount. I also wanted to record, or make note that one of the areas that has come to our attention more recently, and we can talk about this later, is providing assistance to remote education learning for our school districts. That's become a critical issue. The funding that we received allows for those funds to be used for, in that area. So that's a discussion we might want to have about what role we might want to play or participate in and assisting the school districts in, in making sure that remote access learning is available to the student, Mesa students. And then the next one is employee health and wellness. Had a lot of inquiries for our, from our employees about COVID testing, serology testing for our employees. And so we have followed up with our wellness center and their medical directors. We believe that we will be able to have a program set up fairly soon so that employees, making it easily accessible for employees who want to receive the testing, the COVID testing, as well as many of our public safety folks are concerned about the antibody testing and having that made available. And so we've set aside these funds to provide for those tests and the, and more importantly, maybe the access to that testing. And some, for some, especially in public safety, those tests may be, it may be more than one test over a period of time. So we have, we're looking at using our wellness center to provide that service. And then the last point, luckily, we have not had impacted significantly by employees who've had to be on sick leave or medical leave because of a COVID exposure. But if they were to be exposed and impacted by the virus, their time off would also, is an eligible expense and would be covered, could be covered by this fund also. And the next one is community health and, and safety. And again, this is outside of public safety PPE. This would be PPE for the civilian side of the city. This is a lot of cleaning supplies we've had to acquire, the cost to clean playground equipment, the additional cost to provide that service would be covered in this half million dollars. And then just not knowing what the future holds, to set aside a little bit, 2.6 million for contingency that we would probably want to review with council again at the end of the summer before we get too close to the end of the period. But just, there's just a lot of things we don't know what we might need in the future. So it was just suggested that we hold on to a little bit of contingency now for maybe through the summer and then evaluate where we are as far as expenditures at that point. And we don't want to leave any money on the table. So we would have the 2.6 to cover any additional contingencies at the end of the year. So Mayor, council, that's a proposed, I'm sorry for the length, but you can tell we're trying to provide programming in a variety of different areas and thoughts about trying to make a difference. Again, just clarifying, I do think the council may want to consider in the business assistance program that there may be funding, we may have, I, we just, it was an estimate of the 20 million, but if the, there's some, a portion of that 20 million is available, council may want to have a discussion about, do we want to play a role in providing remote access for Mesa students, especially the K through 6 age group? And do we want to set aside any of the funding possibly to leverage a permanent sheltered facility also in Mesa? So I just put that out for a conversation. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I know we've got lots of, lots of council, a lot of feedback on this. But I, just, just to get us to this point, I just want to, again, give a compliment to Mr. Brady and his staff. I think this was a great presentation. Every, every bullet point, you know, on that presentation has been a result of a lot of deliberation, a lot of outreach, a lot of talking to people in the community. And I, I think it's all very, very defensible, but I, I know we've got a lot of questions here. Mr. Luna, let's start with you.
Mr. Brady, first of all, thank you for working with Mesa Arts Center staff, the founding partners. They really struggled during this pandemic. Obviously, people can't attend Mesa Arts Center and provide, and are no longer able to work. And I appreciate that you worked closely with Cindy Ornstein to get that going. So I appreciate, so I want to acknowledge that. The other thing I think that we need to really talk about is the remote learning in terms of working with our school districts. I know that many of our school districts here in, in and around Mesa GPS, as well as Mesa Public Schools, have not been able to provide roaming, remote learning access to many of our Title I schools. I think this is something that is very important for our community. This is directly impacted, they were directly impacted by the COVID virus. Many of these kids were receiving educational packets. Unfortunately, that doesn't keep them up, it doesn't keep them to pace in terms of their educational. The teachers tried really hard to make sure they were on task. But when you have access to remote learning via computer, through the internet, you, I, I believe this is a better way of providing educational opportunities for our students. I know Mesa Public Schools has many Title I schools. And as you know, a Title I school is a school that, when you have a population of 40% of the students are under, live under poverty, they qualify for Title I funds. I think we might want to use that mechanism as we move forward in terms of providing some technology for these students. If we work with Mesa Public Schools and Gilbert Public Schools and, and in partnership, they can work with an internet provider like Cox Communication, they can provide them the internet that they need at their homes. But certainly, working with our Title I schools, which there are many Mesa Public Schools, I know, I spoke to Dr. McCord yesterday relative to what's happening in Gilbert Public Schools. He's got three Title I schools in Gilbert, and certainly, we need to work with them. And we're also going to have to look at working with some of our charter schools within the city of Mesa to ensure that they, we're providing them, providing them with the tools they need to get their kids caught up. Because as, as we look at poverty, we know there are kids in poverty, are lagging behind because they don't have the experiences. So we want to make sure we can at least try to catch them up and providing these, the tools that they need is essential. So I would recommend that we work with Mesa Public Schools, Gilbert Public Schools, and so our charter schools and provide them with the tools they need to get our kids caught up because they were truly affected by the pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. You said the three title schools in Gilbert Public Schools, the three, there's three Title I schools from Gilbert Public Schools in the city of Mesa, right?
Yes, there's one, yeah, there's one on actually on Harris Road. And there's one, there's two east of Power Road. I spoke to Dr. McCord yesterday and asked him how many he had in his school district. He's expressed that he's very interested in working in partnership with the city of Mesa, if that's the direction of, of the city and the council. But certainly, there's a real need there as well. And as you know, Mesa Public Schools has, there are many students that attend our school districts that qualify for free reduced lunch and which qualifies them for Title I funds. So certainly, we, if we can afford, if we can support them in their needs and providing educational opportunities, I'm certainly willing to support our efforts in that direction.
Thank you, David. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, going back to the, to the presentation, Chris, on the community health and safety, kind of, kind of a combination between community self and safety, community health and safety and the healthy buildings retrofit. I, I was wondering, are we, are we going to continue to buy like the sanitization equipment and different things, you know, the wipes and stuff to wipe down, you know, the, the chairs or, you know, as people come in and out of buildings? I, I went to, I had a doctor's appointment the other day and, and I, and I went in and, you know, I, I signed in and then I used the hand sanitizer. And as soon as I sat down, the lady grabbed the wipie, the lady at the desk grabbed the sanitizing wipe and she wiped down the pencil, she wiped the entire, the entire area and then wiped also the hand sanitizer top that I cut. So I'm just wondering, are we, is some of the expenses going to be put in towards, you know, the sanitization aspects, not, not just the hand sanitizer itself, equipment, but also like wipes and different things like that to disinfect areas as people come in? And again, I mean, you know, we have to be cautious that, you know, flu season's coming up. And so I think this would be a good, good opportunity or a good way to also combat the flu virus as well as the COVID virus.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilor Thompson, we're, that, yes, we're trying to look at all those supplies and just the availability of supplies and having those available as employees begin to return back to the workplace. But again, that's probably why, as we're talking with our employee, our departments, is we're not going to have, it's going to be staggering, it's going to be smaller groups of employees that are going to be in the workplace at the same time. But yes, all those supplies, we're trying to identify those and what we have in the world. But yes, all those supplies, we're trying to identify those and what we have in the warehouse and getting our, making sure our orders are being processed. So yeah, all those things we're going to have to continue to look at.
Thank you. I know I saw some other hands. Can you remind me? Mr. Freeman?
Hey, thank you, Chris, for the presentation. The question I had was on the, I think PowerPoint slide five. It talked about the potential reimbursement for public safety.
Yes, sir.
Fifty million dollars. Now, I know you've asked for budget cuts for different departments, well, for all departments. Will that affect the departments by some of this reimbursement for not only public safety, but other departments?
So Mayor and Council, yes, oh.
By not having to cut their budget by very much, that's.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So remember, this is one-time dollars. And so our dilemma is not a one-time problem, it's an ongoing problem in a couple of years. However, to your point, we're still going through the exercise of identifying reductions in the departments. But I think what it's done for us, I think, has bought us time. So I don't anticipate, I think what the 50 million dollars will do for the city and for the budget, frankly, is it takes the pressure off of us having to find reductions in filled positions that are filled by individuals today. What we are looking for and what we've, many of the departments have been very helpful with is identifying positions that are currently vacant, that we would just hold vacant through the end of the calendar year and then have an opportunity to evaluate where we stand on the budget at that point. So we're still going through the exercise, the departments are still responding to us. But I think what the 50 million dollars could do for us, because it's one-time, it just pushes out the decision or the need to make any decisions about reduction in workforce as far as filled positions. But we are still looking for opportunities if we can and not have a significant impact on operations to not fill positions, just freeze them again through the end of the year, just hold on to them. Don't eliminate them, but just not fill those positions through the calendar year and then have another opportunity to evaluate. So that seems to be the benefit of this 50 million is it just kind of allows us more time to really assess the economy. And then hopefully, maybe, right, that if we see improvement sooner than we expected, that will help us make decisions about frozen positions. If it's worse than we expected, then we'll have to have another conversation. But that's, to your point, yes, it's, we're still going through the exercise of identifying opportunities for savings because, for recurring savings. But it is helping us significantly to maybe defer those decisions, those tougher decisions much further out into the future than we would otherwise had to make.
Okay, great. My last question was on the healthy, the, the air filtering systems on page number nine.
Yes.
And, and so this is, you're analyzing that for current buildings that public goes in and out of? Is that kind of your thought process or?
That most, but really for all, for employees, I think what we've seen is, what I've been told is they have proven to be very effective in our dispatch area for fire. In the building that we moved into, what, four or five years ago? And we installed a system down there and it's gotten very good response to. And our facilities folks have done more research and it indicates these plasma filters can be very beneficial in mitigating against viruses in the air. So we're looking at making a substantial improvement or installation of these filters in, in our larger facilities where we have lots of employees. So that's how we're, again, we're going through the review right now to install those. But that's seems to be one of those improvements that we can make that truly would help make the facility a healthy facility and help mitigate against any airborne contamination.
So, I mean, that brings up a good point. I, I just look at our first responders, both police and fire, who respond to any type of situation. Are there fire stations or police substations being analyzed as well, perhaps on an air filtering system? Because I know when guys get off fire trucks and they just walk in the station, having done that in the past, it'd be nice to have some type of confidence to know that, hey, I'm having some type of filtration. I know some of our stations have them. I don't know about all of them today. But that's just a thought.
Okay.
And that goes, that goes for your public works guys and gals, you know, walking into the break rooms. I mean, you could extrapolate that all across the water department, the solid waste, right? I'm just throwing that out.
No, you're, I think the first priority is, and all those are, are great. And if we can end up accomplishing that, I think right now, our first priority is where we have large groups of employees that are in their offices in the cubicles for an extended period of time. That's what we're establishing those building facilities first. And then we can work our way down through those others. And if it proves that it really has the ability to perform like it says, you know, why wouldn't we look at doing it in all our facilities? So I think that's something we can certainly look at.
Okay. And then again, I really like the idea of working with our public schools, charters and everybody about getting assistance to them. So thank you, Councilmember Luna, for that, bringing that up and kind of analyzing that more. So thank you for all you do. I appreciate this presentation.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Duff?
Yes, I'd like to weigh in on, I concur with Councilmembers Luna's comments about the education and the importance of supporting that, especially as many of those families have been hit very hard by COVID. Many are have service workers, many are unemployed. And so the economic hardship is even more critical in providing for their children to be able to receive the education that they need. I'm also want to weigh in support for a permanent shelter. I think it is a way that we can take the dollars that are given in our federal dollars of the CARES Act and a, and create a positive lasting effect, having a sustainable impact on our community, especially as our economy will still feel the aftershocks of the COVID in years to come. Businesses will not come back completely the way they were before. It's going to be a slow transition and our employment will have lasting effects. So therefore, with our shortage of housing, shortage of housing that's affordable, unemployment and things like that, I think homelessness will continue to rise. And this is a way to support our operation off the streets. I'm so thrilled with that program. And if we can sustain that by having a shelter to refer those homeless, to get them off the streets, I think it's critical that we look at making that acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Other comments, Council?
I'll take the opportunity to express support for this presentation. I, I listened recently in a podcast to the Fed Chairman talking about the, the need, who, the Fed Chairman, remember, is a Trump appointee, a very conservative individual. But he was making the argument for the need to, to provide stimulus and assistance at this time to avoid permanent economic damage in our country. And how there are countless small businesses, families that are really at peril of experiencing bankruptcy and generational impacts, you know, as a result of the economic damage that we're seeing in our country right now. So I really endorse our Small Business Assistance Grant Program. I appreciate, you know, the hard work of Jake and others, you know, to stand it up so quickly. I know we allocated 20 million for that, but that was really just a shot in the dark. We didn't know what, you know, what the need would be, what we could realistically insert into the, into the economy and into the community with people that were in need. And I'm not at all disappointed that we found out it's more along, you know, closer to seven than it is to 20 because that gives us additional funds to use for the same purpose, you know, but maybe it's just through a different delivery vehicle. I had the privilege yesterday of attending both a canned food drive where I saw tremendous generosity on the part of our citizens, but also a food delivery where the restaurant food was delivered to very appreciative healthcare workers. And so the money that we're spending in our, in our food distribution and in our food, our restaurant buyout programs, that's, that's helping real people. That's helping real small businesses. Ninety restaurants are participating in it. And again, I think it's assisting us in getting this economy into the hands of people who need it and can benefit from it and helping us to avoid some of this permanent damage that we, that this money is earmarked for. I really endorse the idea of using this money for testing. I think one of, one of the big picture critiques that we can take from the way our country has responded to this situation and in our state and our community is the need for testing. So testing our own employees is important, not just so that we're a good employer, but because our employees interact with the public. And when we identify, if and when we identify one of our employees that is, has the virus and we isolate that person and protect them, we're protecting them from the, from the public and we're protecting from the spread of the virus throughout our community. So it's, I really endorse using these funds for testing. And I suspect a lot of that money will be reimbursed as well. The Healthy Buildings Initiative, I appreciate. I think it reflects that we're all settling into a new normal. When, like Mr. Thompson, when I'm in a, in a public setting now, I really appreciate looking around and seeing hand sanitizers on the wall or just, you know, not being forced to touch doorknobs and surfaces, you know, that I don't need to. So I think that is, you know, the, the design of buildings, the amenities that we offer to our employees, but also to the public who's visiting our buildings to make sure that they feel safe and they feel like they can, can conduct their business with the city in a, in a safe and a smart way is critically important. So that's clearly an appropriate and, and good expenditure of these funds. And Mr. Brady, I absolutely want to prioritize our employees, but I think it's also important that we look at our museums, our libraries, you know, our outward facing buildings and that, that those buildings, again, are very welcoming in terms of the amenities that we have so people can feel like they're in a cleanest and safe environment. So all of these same amenities that we're providing for our employees, I hope we're doing that for the, the public as well when they interact with us in our public facing facilities. The, the remote access learning idea is one that I also really endorse along with Mr. Luna and Ms. Duff. I think the new normal again is going to be even as early as this fall. We might see that our, maybe our children might not go back to school in August. You know, we'll just have to see. But certainly over the summer, they're going to be deprived of summer school. And remote learning, I think, is going to become a bigger and bigger part of the new normal going forward. So we need to recognize that and we need to assist our, our public schools and charter schools and just realizing that that's the new normal now. And even when they go back to school, I think you're going to see social distancing is going to be a part of the curriculum. And kids might go one week and be home one week. Or, you know, having devices, having the access, the, the, the technology we need for remote access learning is just a reality now. And so we need to make sure that, that kids in Mesa aren't at a disadvantage and that they have the technology they need to participate in that. I also endorse the idea of looking for, if we can have a legacy purchase of this money to take one of our blighted motels out of a crime-ridden state and we can avoid, take a building that has been a place where a lot of bad things happen and turn it into a place that's headed in a positive direction, I would endorse that. So I'm looking forward to seeing what opportunity might present itself in that regard. So again, I, Mr. Brady, my compliments again to you and your staff for what I think is a very responsible proposal for how to, to use this money that we've received from the federal government. Mr. Freeman, do I see your hand up?
You do, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hey, I just want to make a comment on, on your last, I know Councilmember Duff and yourself talked about this permanent shelter. But I just want to be cautious about placement because when you centralize a permanent shelter, say, in, in an area where there's other social services, I think that it extrapolates a problem like Cass is experiencing in Phoenix today. So I, I know what other cities are doing. What I'd like to know is the contributions of our neighboring cities into homelessness. I mean, they, they share our vouchers with us. I'd like to know, you know, probably how many homeless they support or we support for them and utilizing our current shelters that we, well, we don't have a current shelter. But if we were, I, I just promote, I, I just don't, how can our, again, economic development really work if we centralize social services, let's just say in the downtown area? So I, I'm not in favor of that. I just think we need to spread it out throughout our community so that not one area carries the burden. And we have to listen to, you know, continue issues. So with that said, I, I would look forward to the analysis of that in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And I just want to acknowledge that those are very, very real issues, all of them. And they will get a very thorough vetting, you know, if and when we, we get a proposal back, you know, to acquire a facility and where that is, what part of our community is going to be in and how it's going to be operated and, and what the relative contribution of our neighboring cities is. I can tell you right now, I'm very, it's not good. Mesa is doing more than its share and Mesa is not going to become the repository for the East Valley for all of these services. I think we're, we all understand that in this, you know, Brady Bunch call that we're on. But I think we need to just help our neighboring communities understand that the new normal going forward is not, you know, that Mesa's the big brother that takes care of everybody's homeless. Mr. Whitaker, and then we've got a few more hands.
My question is on slide five. When we talk about the public safety, the 50 million going towards public safety, that's obviously a large percentage of the 90 million that we've received, something 55%. Are we anticipating 50 million dollars in new public safety expenditures due to COVID?
Mayor, Councilman Whitaker, the criteria from the guidance is it's not new. It's to reimburse for the effort that is ongoing from public safety from March 1st to December 30th. And our estimate is that it would be that, in order to continue to provide those services as we have, that that would be about 50 million dollars.
Okay, I, I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong. I thought the Treasury guidelines were that you could only use the funds towards new expenditures that weren't accounted for in your previous budget.
That is correct. That is the, that was, that is the rule. And then the exception was for public safety because recognizing, trying to distinguish when a police officer or fire medical are substantially involved in a COVID response versus the other routine responses they have, they came out with a guidance that said that we could just presume that all payroll costs were for public health and safety. And so they allowed for all of those expenses to be reimbursed.
So we're, our, so our public safety budget is going to be relative, I, I mean, it's going to be the same as what we approved, what was that, last month? And it's not increasing, public safety budget is not increased. Do we have an anticipated increased cost of public safety or are we not planning on increasing it at all?
No, just, just reimbursing the city. So the city will be reimbursed for those expenses. So we'll receive, we, and we already have the funds, the funds, we already have the funds. The funds are in our account today. So we will move those dollars into the, I can't remember what we're calling it, the CARES Fund and identify that as a reimbursement for those expenses. So what it does is it provides us 50 million dollars in one-time dollars going forward. It doesn't impact, increase the public safety budget at all. It remains the same as it is. And that's how we actually make the calculation, is Candace goes, has gone into the budget today, what we expend today in payroll from, again, starting March 1st to the end of December. So she has actuals and then she has to estimate and determine what the reimbursement will be. And again, we're having these conversations with Tunisian and Phoenix. We want to make sure we're all kind of doing this about the same way. But our estimate is that that reimbursement for those services, based on the criteria that we now have from the federal government, is about 45, 50 million dollars.
Okay, so if it's not, so if we're taking the 50 million and sticking it back into public safety, but public safety's budget isn't increasing, then I'm assuming those funds are just going to then trickle back into the general fund essentially to be spent on our internal budget?
Yeah, the 50 million becomes available to the city.
Okay. So, you know, look, I appreciate all the stuff we're doing with the, with the, you know, So, you know, look, I appreciate all the stuff we're doing with the, you know, providing the utility rates stuff to our citizens and the food bank money, but I don't, it's not my opinion that this is how these federal funds are supposed to be used to supplant our budget, right? So, I guess the thing that concerns me is when I, when I look at the economic statistics and I see unemployment rate at 15%, you know, you see the Fed Chair talking about unemployment rate going as high as 25%, 8% of Americans are in forbearance on their mortgages, home sales have fallen 18% in the last month. I think we should be allocating this $90 million to stimulate our local economy, whether it's for, you know, food, shelter, utilities, you know, I don't believe we should be what I'll call a loophole to supplant our local budget. So, I'm entirely opposed to using such a large chunk of that money, you know, just because we can't balance our budget and I don't believe that's what the funds were intended for. I do agree with the mayor that, you know, we should increase testing, right? I mean, we know we can stop the spread by increasing testing, but I completely oppose what, how we're transferring that money back into our general fund.
So, Mayor and Council, let me make, I'll try to make this statement and I think I'm pretty clear with this is this is not a loophole. This is a very specific intentional provision of these funds to assist cities making it through these difficult times. And so, there has been tremendous amount of conversation with the Department of Treasury on this point and frankly, this is what almost all the large cities are receiving the funds. That's how they're using it as a one-way to help mitigate against the impact that it's having on budgets. So, I think we're definitely in alignment. This is not, this isn't Chris Brady being real creative. This is what every city is talking about and I, you, I haven't heard, but I've heard that all the way up at the highest levels in DC that they're actually saying, yes, that was the intention of these funds is to help cities manage through this difficult times. So, I don't want this, this should not be represented as a loophole or some kind of trickery. It is intentional. There have been specific questions asked of Treasury specifically to this issue and answered and the language that I actually have on your PowerPoint, that bullet point, is almost verbatim from what comes from Treasury. So, and then again, it's more of a priority, Council, but it is absolutely an allowance that most of the cities are using and we can go, we can talk about Phoenix and Tucson, which are at the same level as we are.
Yeah, legal or not, I guess my point is, I'm, legal or not legal, I'm just saying I think the economy is in a shape where the money should be getting out to our citizens, not, not 55% of it being withheld. So, that's my only point. I'm not disagreeing on the legalities of what you can and can't do, but rather the moral perspective of how we should be using the funds.
Okay. But I just want to add a comment as well. I had a conversation a week or so ago with the mayor of one of the 10 largest cities in the United States, not Phoenix, but one of the large city in Texas, and he told me that they, again, this is specifically at the instruction of the federal government, that they essentially were using, spending all of their CARE dollars to replace their city budget, you know, and through the month of December. Because of, because one of the big criticisms of the CARES Act was that it provided no allowance for revenue replacement for cities particularly like Mesa, Arizona, that are so heavily dependent on sales tax and economic activity, you know, if we were not allowed at the federal government's direction to use this money for essential services like police officers and firefighters, we'd be forced to eliminate or curtail those services and we'd have buckets of money that we have to be creative with to figure out what to do with and then other buckets that are bone dry that are for essential services. So, this is, as Mr. Brady indicated, this is, I think, is the allowance to use this money for, for public safety, I think, is in direct response to that very obvious flaw in the CARES Act. And I can tell you that our neighboring cities are using this for public safety to a larger extent than we are. We are, I think, a good example of erring on the side of using this money to help the community and using relatively, compared to other cities, small amount to replace revenues and to keep essential services going. Mr. Luna?
Yes, Mayor, and Mr. Brady, I was going to echo your sentiments relative to the public safety dollars going from the CARES Act. We just attended, Councilmember Thompson and I attended a National League of Cities Board Meeting and Irma Sparza-Dix, who deals specifically with the federal government, cited that most cities across the United States that have received the federal CARES dollars are using it for public safety to support their efforts during this pandemic. So, we're not unique. This is happening at a national level and they, we received guidance from the Treasury Department that we could use those dollars for that purposes. So, I think this is an appropriate use and I think that Mr. Brady's and Council's direction is to continue to support this effort.
Thank you. Mr. Redia?
Yeah, you know, I have other comments on this topic. I think talking to public safety the last couple of weeks, you know, made aware that, you know, every call is now a COVID-19 call and that, you know, how they're handling folks, how they're having conversations from, you know, your police officer on the street that is handling a disturbance or a theft call to, you know, your firefighter that's going to a call there to her home, you know, that's, that's something that we've had to adjust, that staff has had to adjust on that. And so, I agree in using it on public safety, but I would also suggest, and I don't know, Mr. Brady, if residential rental assistance was, was part of the, with, I know Mesa Can has the ability to do rental assistance, but is rental assistance, can we provide that under some of these dollars for our residents? That's one question I have.
Mayor, Councilman Redia, that would be an eligible expense because Mesa, as you mentioned, Mesa Can has received some funding for that. We've kind of allowed, that's why we're referring people to Mesa Can so they can tap into the resources they have received for that. And then recall, if you recall, we've also allocated a significant amount of our, what do we call it, our COVID CPG dollars to help, to save the family, to specifically address individuals who are behind on their rent and mortgage. And so, we've kind of allocated our federal dollars outside of these CARES dollars for that purpose. So, we are assisting individuals and mostly through Save the Family and intend on, remember, we've got one more round of dollars coming to us and our recommendation will be to continue to supplement more additional dollars to Save the Family. As I've met with Jackie Taylor, that's what they want to do is, that's their kind of bread and butter is to be able to assist families, to make sure they stay in their homes, whether it's rent or mortgage assistance. And so, outside, instead of using these dollars specifically for that, we're allocating those other federal dollars that we're receiving, we have received and we're going to receive. Our intention is to continue recommending that Save the Family and these other nonprofits have that responsibility.
Okay. You know, I would, I would like to see a more robust rental assistance program for residents. So, if we could monitor, keep on monitoring what, you know, groups like Save the Family and Mesa Can that we're working with, if they need additional dollars, that we, you know, figure out ways that we can assist, that would be my preference on the rental assistance. I think, I think there's a big pool out there that might need, you know, maybe looking at caps of how much we provide or so we can, you know, spread, spread some of, some of the assistance dollars out, but, you know, working with the current nonprofits that we were working with to build a little bit more robust program on that end. And then my other point is on testing, I think testing will be critical as we move forward, especially without a vaccine. And so, I would, I would like to suggest some planning, of course, with our employees, but also how we can work with community members like, you know, small business owners and others and how we can look at testing in our community because I think cities will, will be in the forefront of leading testing moving forward. And so, if we can have a robust, maybe Plan A, Plan B around testing, of course, our employees, but maybe Plan B, looking at additional, you know, employees that, you know, small business owners and others that might need assistance in navigating through testing so that we can look at those options within the next several months and into the fall.
Okay.
Thank you, Frankie. Chris, when you started your response to Frankie's question about rental assistance, it might have just been on my end, but I think you were breaking up just a little bit and so I didn't quite hear the first part of your response to that. But my understanding is that there is not a lot of, a big green light in the CARES Act FAQs and other, you know, information that encourages or promotes the use of CARES Act dollars for rental assistance.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Well, Mayor, I think originally that, there was some concern about that and how we would, I think the question was how we were going to make the payments directly to landlords and banks and whether or not, knowing whether they've gotten referrals or how that's worked. So, that's why we've kind of always been, since we already have established nonprofits who have been providing that service, it just seemed a lot easier to have them to continue to do that and to supplement additional dollars to them to continue to provide those services, whether it's Mesa Can or whether it's Save the Family. And so, that's, if there's, I think what Councilman Redia suggested, and I think it's what we can follow up with, and I just had a conversation with Jackie Taylor a couple of weeks ago, is we'll keep talking to them about the demand that they're seeing for assistance and if there's, and again, we're talking about adding, supplementing additional dollars to them in the second round of the COVID dollars we're getting for the federal government to Save the Family, but we can have that conversation with Mesa Can. So, we'll, I think the conversation, I think what I heard, at least this is what I was anticipating, is we're going to keep monitoring with Save the Family and Mesa Can about the demand for those dollars to provide assistance for rental assistance and mortgage assistance. And we're hoping that while they're having that conversation too, we're helping them with utilities and we can help them with food. But specifically for the rental assistance, if there's additional needs, that we can try to identify resources to provide those groups to continue to provide that services. I think my point is, if it's a need and we have the financial resources to assist, we will. I would prefer to allow the nonprofits in that area, because that's kind of a very specific area in the experience they have, to keep meeting with the clients, refer the clients to them and let them process the assistance, if that makes sense.
Sure. And as you pointed out, I think having a very robust utility assistance program, very robust food assistance program, you know, it is targeting that money to the, to the folks who need it the most. So, I appreciate that. Councilmember Duff?
Yes. On the small business assistance, I noticed that seeing utilization, the demand as much as we expected, however, I don't know how much of it is, you know, there's not the need, but perhaps they just don't know. But given that if we have dollars available, and I think we do, I would like to advocate for a more robust technical assistance program because that goes to businesses, all businesses, whether they're nonprofits, whether they've received other assistance. And everybody's dealing with a new economy and how they do business and those who can adapt and transition their businesses faster have a greater chance of being successful and continuing in their business instead of shutting down because business is not as usual. So, that is, I think, as much of a critical point or maybe even more than the actual dollars themselves is how do we do businesses differently and be successful? So, I'd like to see that program be robust and if we, to transition some dollars in there and have a wider net over the businesses we can serve because it is not just a subset of the businesses. They can be any size, they can be nonprofit, they can be, have received assistance, whatever that is. And there's a lot of that are scrambling and don't know how, how to get their business reorganized fast enough in order to be in the new way of doing business. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Duff, thank you for that. That's probably, we don't spend enough time talking about how important that is. And I know that Jay and her team are working on a, what we hope to be a very robust, robust program to everything you just said. And so, we want to bring that to you in the next couple of weeks, a discussion about that because we do see that as very critical to the survivability as businesses pivot. And so, both technical assistance, as you mentioned, and then also maybe a very strong marketing program to kind of kick off and let people know how they can come in and come back into the market and participate in the different, whether it's tourism or what other part of Mesa businesses need assistance. So, thank you for that and we are working on bringing that proposal to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Other comments or questions? All right. Well, again, this is also agendized as to providing direction. I'm going to suggest that the consensus of Council is to support the presentation that Mr. Brady has made and the allocations that are there and acknowledging that it's got some contingencies built into it, so there's still a little wiggle room there. Is that a fair summarization, Council? All right, I'm seeing some nodding of heads. So, again, Mr. Brady, I hate to keep repeating myself, but I just want to give my compliments to you and your staff for the way that you've responded to this wonderful blessing of this CARE Act money, but also this wonderful challenge of being responsible in the way that we use this money and allocating it in the most effective ways. So, thank you for your job. Well done.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers.
You bet. The next item on our agenda is Item 2A, to acknowledge receipts of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect?
A motion.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Freeman. We need to do a roll call vote. I vote aye. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Councilmember Redia?
Aye.
Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know we've all been busy, Council. Who would like to begin? Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had a real busy week. Yesterday, I convened a meeting with National League of Cities, both Hilo and Apomel, and we talked about issues affecting COVID throughout the United States. And it was a great meeting because we've included some representatives from the state of Washington to talk about how they're dealing with the pandemic. I continued to support and create some videos based on your presentations. I just translate them in Spanish and we put them on Facebook in Espanol. Also, I attended a meeting with Mesa Prevention Alliance Coalition. What they're doing is seeking to empower the community members to promote health and wellness within the city through education, awareness and advocacy. So, I attended that as well. And then this afternoon, I'll let Mr. Redia talk about what's going to be happening in Facebook in Espanol this afternoon.
Thank you. Frankie, do you want to take it from there?
Sure, yeah. So, we'll be hosting a digital summit in Spanish, me and Councilmember Luna, where we'll be talking about updates of what we're doing as a city to assist small businesses, our plans on parks and recreation and other information. So, tune in at 2:00 PM on Mesa in Espanol where we'll have a panel talking about those updates and taking questions and so, thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. Who'd like to be next? Councilmember Duff?
Yes. On Tuesday, I visited the Mesa Convention Center in their kitchen in which they, personal touch catering was preparing about 1,000 meals that were being distributed to our nonprofits for those in need, like Positive Crystal, St. Vincent de Paul, many others. So, they have packaged meals to go to fill that demand. I think it's an excellent So they have packaged meals to go to fill that demand. I think it's an excellent uh use of our facilities and um our, our staffing that's supporting those services and getting food to those in need. Um, so thank you for putting together that program. Um, also yesterday, I was also back at the Mesa Convention Center, but in the parking lot on the north side Senator University and doing the um eating Mesa Can food drive. And we had some very generous residents drop um quite a bit of food. And so thank you to all of them. And to let everybody know that it's continuing on Wednesdays until I think July 15th uh throughout Mesa at different locations, but the one in Central Mesa and my district at the Mesa Convention Center is on Wednesdays from 8:00 until noon. And it's a very easy drive-through. Uh, we open your car, pull out the food and say thank you. So um load up your car and come see us next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Thompson.
I just want to um do a shout out to House of Refuge. Um, today and tomorrow, they're, they do, every Thursday and Friday, they do a drive-through um public food distribution from 8:00 to 11:00. Um, so I'm going to be out there tomorrow helping out on volunteering time. I just wanted to give a shout out to them and to anyone in our community or the surrounding communities that need help. Um, please feel free to come out to House of Refuge out of Gateway Airport and do the drive-through uh food distribution.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I mean, we, we, we do need to do a good job of publicizing that event. I think we, we've seen an amazingly successful food distribution events, you know, going on in the convention center parking lot, but we need to make sure that the southeast parts of Mesa know that uh House of Refuge has got similar uh capacity and events going on. Mr. Freeman.
Hey, Mayor, thank you. I just want to do a shout out. Uh, this week is National Public Works Week. I guess May 17th through the 23rd and thank our Public Works employees. You know, we have a lot of critical services that are provided from our Public Works departments and uh uh just wanted to let them know that we appreciate their hard work, getting out and doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think I already mentioned some of the, uh, the food uh collection and distribution events I was uh privileged to take part in this, this past week earlier. Uh, another tidbit of information I think that I, I'm anxious to, to share is I just received word that the the uh 2019 census estimates are going to be announced and Mesa is, uh, our numbers are now up to near to 519,000 people, you know, nearly 520,000 people. So we continue to see, you know, dramatic uh growth in our, in our community. So I think that, that uh, you know, that reflects in a lot of the things we've been talking about today, the need for us in spite of the challenges that we're facing related to COVID, to just acknowledge the fact that this is, remains a place that's very attractive, where a lot of people are coming here. Uh, I think we have every reason to be very optimistic that our economic recovery will be strong and will be fast uh when the time is right. So uh, I just want to acknowledge the obvious that Mesa continues to grow very fast and, and that creates uh it's a blessing, but also a big challenge for, for those of us on this, uh, participating in this meeting today and Mr. Brady and his staff. Um, Mr. Brady, tell us about our schedule for future meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our next council meeting will be a study session on May 28th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the business on our agenda. Council, please unmute your microphones. Uh, and is there, Mr. Freeman's made a motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. See you soon. This meeting is adjourned.